About five seconds.
All right, we welcome everybody here to our school board meeting here. We'll start out with the pledge of allegiance told by prayer.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in heaven, we're grateful for the opportunities we have to be here tonight. We're grateful for the safe travels that we've had coming here. We're grateful for this meeting that brings us together as we discuss the needs and the things which we strive to keep improving in the school district. We are grateful to be part of this community and great friends and neighbors that we enjoy. We ask as we discuss and talk about the things that are on the agenda that we may discuss and decide the things which would be pleasing unto thee. As always, we ask to please bless our teachers and our students and all those at work in the school corporation that they, all their desires and best efforts will go to, to help the children in this community to receive the best education they can, to help them be set up for success throughout their life. We are grateful for all these, these things, and we say this in the name of Jesus Christ, amen. Our future board meetings, next one is 23 September, followed by the October 14th. That's the only one in October, and then we got one November 11th, all here at six o'clock. Public recognition, we have several contributions, donations, so we'll get those all approved at one time. Recommendation to approve $870 donation from Robert and Claudia Baye, $250 from Greg and Jane Runyon, $100 from Judith Zerball, $100 from Nina and Harry Miller, $25 from Billy and Linda Syke, 50 from Mark and Catherine Miller, 50 from William and Connie Moore, 50 from David and Marcy Klein, 25 from Sam Knight, 50 from John and Diane Cauldron, 100 from Brad and Marley and Dale, 50 from anonymous donor, and 20, that goes all to Northfield Athletics. Recommendation to approve $1,500 donation from Thorn Insurance for Northfield Cheerleading, and recommendation to approve $100 donation from the Kilted Seeds for Northfield Girls Golf. Recommendation to approve $2850 estimated value from Thorn Insurance Agency for Northfield Athletics student passes. Recommendation to approve $15,000 from Ford Meterbox for 2526 school year for all schools. Recommendation to approve $950 from Randy Scroggins, 50 from Troy and Stacy Bear, 100 from Howard Halderman, 50 from Kerry Crumb, 250 from Stephen J. Cauldron, and 500, and that all goes to Northfield Athletics. I think that's it. I get a motion second to approve all those donations.
Salute on the generous donations.
A second, bud.
Motion and second to approve these donations, all the favors say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and as always, we appreciate all these donations that go to our schools and help these programs move forward. School recognition.
Yes, so we'll start out with our Staff of the Year recognition for Southwood Elementary. Let's make my way up here to the front. Long way over here to the camera view. But today we'd like to spotlight our Staff of the Year, Teacher of the Year for Southwood Elementary, and we'll start with Mrs. Lisa Fadel. Don't mind coming up here, Lisa. Congratulations. Lisa was recognized by her peers as Teacher of the Year for Southwood Elementary, and so I just wanted to highlight a couple of things, and I can confirm these things because I got to work with Lisa at Southwood Elementary for a few years when I was there. But Lisa is an amazing problem solver. She is very driven. She takes on several of our programs each year and not only makes sure our students know the lyrics to the songs, but she also teaches the choreography for the song. She is full of grace and passion for her job. Our students are so lucky to have her in the educational field. And so those were just some recognitions by your peers. I don't know if Mr. Stoffler would like to chime in and add anything?
Yeah, sure. Lisa does an excellent job in the classroom. She's always trying new things. She integrates music to help make it fun and engage the students. She's even learning how to play the guitar right now. She's even teaching more phonics, phonetic awareness as well, so she does a great job at that. Her classroom management is superb. She creates a very good learning environment for the kindergartners. Some of you guys know this, but we had 75 in our kindergarten, so she had 25 students. Just her with 25 kindergartners can be tough. And she did an excellent job last year. I think this year we're still at 20.
I think we're at 21.
21. So she, she does a phenomenal job. She's got a really special connection with those tough, difficult students. She can really, she has a special niche for them and give them the greatest of top potential. So it kind of reminds me of someone I grew up with at Southwood. High school's a teacher that I had in my house. She had that special niche that my mom had, and it's kind of cool to see that she can really turn those kids around and give them the greatest of top potential, so very appreciative.
Yeah, we very appreciate you, Lisa, and so we'd like to recognize you with a $50 gift card. First Farmers Bank and Trust is a sponsor of ours that recognizes our staff and Teacher of the Years. And so we have an online store where you can get yourself some Southwood swag, and there's $50 for that. So appreciate that, and I don't know, Mr. Gray, do you want to take a picture?
I got yelled at by Mrs. Lingbarlow. I have to get closer.
Mr. Stoffler, you want to come up here? Don't mind, don't miss.
She tells me to zoom in with my feet. It's, I have to do that.
Next, we'd like to recognize Megan Pietro. Megan is a paraprofessional for Southwood Elementary. I've not had the privilege of working with Megan.
No, I am.
But she works primarily with our special education students in her paraprofessional position. And so just some comments from her peers. She's brave. And is wonderful with our students. And so I piggyback off Mr. Stoffler here.
Yeah, this is your third year, right? So I hired Megan, and it was a kind of a difficult role because she's special education, which is also in the cafeteria as well. She goes above and beyond every aspect of her. She works with Megan Wright, Megan's special ed in there. Megan's a phenomenal teacher that you guys know, and she really likes what Mrs. Pietro's done for our students. A funny story, though, when I, I told you she's in charge of the cafeteria. The very first day of school, when she had to do it, I bugged the bullhorn out because her voice, she goes, I didn't saw her voice. And I'm like, well, here's a bullhorn. You can use the bullhorn if we can find it. But now, she's got the cafeteria voice. Even so much, I heard her children and her husband don't appreciate it like I do. And we're very grateful to have, I think she does a phenomenal job, so thank you very much.
We appreciate it, and we'd like to also recognize you with a $50 gift card to shop on our online store. Thank you very much. Give her a round of applause. With that being said, as another reward, you're more than welcome to leave. But you're also welcome to stay. That's up to you.
Thank you, thanks again.
We appreciate it.
We appreciate you guys.
I'd like to also add a couple of things here, just some recognitions that some of our principals have put in here. So Mrs. Moore from Metro North would like to thank individuals that provided support to teachers by making purchases on teachers' Amazon wish lists. She'd like to specifically thank Andrew Dixon, Brienne Click, Leela Gilman, Sherri West, Fair and Sluss, Bachelor Creek Church of Christ, Teresa Burns, Nancy Halderman, Betsy Erickson, the Stoffler family, and Lori Fitch. Mrs. Moore from Metro North would also like to congratulate Angie Herring, kindergarten teacher at Metro North, for having her donors choose project funded. Her project title, A Lens for Learning, provides an InstaPrint camera and photo printer for her classroom. With these tools, students will capture their learning digitally and have the opportunity to print their work to display. Special thanks to Doug Wells, brother of Angie Herring, for funding this project. And lastly, Mrs. Moore would like to say today was a very exciting day at Metro North. They started their morning with a huge crane arriving to lift the trusses into place on our gym cafeteria expansion. Then during lunch, Mr. Mo Marbach, our onsite construction superintendent from YBN Construction, gave each Metro North student a special construction sticker. Thank you, Mr. Mo. I saw she took some pictures and posted that as well of their interactions, so they seemed to be having a good time. There's a couple of things that I'd like to just recognize. Last week, I was able to attend a Southwood Elementary PTO meeting, and so I just want to take the second to recognize and thank them for their efforts in helping make positive experiences for the Southwood Elementary students and staff. So I just wanted to highlight that we have lots of after-school events happening in our buildings, especially at the junior, senior high level. A lot of time is put in by our admin, coaches, and officials to provide this opportunity. Without them, it would be hard to provide these experiences for our students. A lot of good life lessons happen from these experiences, and we just want to make sure that everybody is kind to everybody when we get into these. We've not had any issues, but we ran into some other issues elsewhere, and so just really appreciate the time and effort that people do put in to create experiences for our students. So that's all I have for recognition.
All right, appreciate that. We'll move on to a public comment, agenda items only. If not, we will move on to our, we need to get into our agenda items. And I need to get a recognition, approval of the minutes for our last meeting, August 26th, and get a motion and second. So, got a motion and second to approve those minutes. All those in favor say aye? Any opposed? Financial report, claims and payroll, number four. Anything, Travis there?
Nothing to speak of unless there's any questions. Payroll was pretty much in line, claims likewise.
Motion and second to approve claims and payroll number four?
A motion. Second.
Got a motion and second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Financial summary.
Yeah, the cash balance report from the end of August is in line with recent months. Any questions on that? Glad to do my best to answer.
We had gibberish on my end. Probably get a better read then. Any questions on the cash flow for August?
Each of the cash flows are clipping right along on education fund and operations fund. Answering any questions that you may have.
I will mention real quick that I found out today that we are within days of receiving at least one of our school buses.
That was from the 2022 order?
Which one was that?
It's one of the, one of the four we're waiting on.
They would pay for it. All right, if there's no questions on that, we'll move on to HR. Our right donations. Our employment. We have Macy Oberlander, fifth and sixth grade volleyball coach. That's effective immediately for Sharp Creek Elementary. Amy Guzmado, substitute teacher for all schools, effective immediately. Lisa Miller, substitute teacher for Metro North, that's effective high to eight. Stephanie Hacker, volunteer junior high volleyball for Southwood High School, that's effective immediately. Grace Snyder, volunteer sixth grade volleyball for Southwood High School, effective immediately. Abigail Bonnet, substitute teacher for all schools, that's effective immediately. And Lori Cisco, substitute teacher for all schools, effective immediately. Another transfer, Allison Rosemeyer, transferring from Sharp Creek Elementary as secretary bookkeeper to Northfield High School as athletic secretary and treasurer, that's effective September 15th. Jessica Fishback, transferring from Metro North, secretary bookkeeper to Sharp Creek Elementary, secretary bookkeeper, effective to be announced. And under Lee, 193, Lee will begin September 8th of 2025, returning October 27th. And 194, Lee will begin October 6th and returning December 1st. That's all from HR. We've got a motion and second to approve these.
Second.
Got a motion and second to approve our resource report. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Reports, anything from Hartland?
Yeah, I'll update what I made just last time about the ABC apprenticeship. While they're doing that, they can earn up to two years of their apprenticeship while being involved at Hartland. Students will also be able to complete 24 credits through Lincoln City University in that. And MSD students last year had earned the following. IB Tech credits 726, Lincoln City's credits 703, Manchester University 16, internships, 95 students, certifications and license serves 219. That's about all this MSD student. That's all I have. We'll have a meeting later on in the week, so.
Good news, thank you. Superintendent.
Superintendent report, first thing I'd just share, we have a construction update for the month of August. And so just kind of share this video here. I put on mute so we don't have to. You're okay with that? Am I supposed to be narrating?
Might need to stick with your data.
We're hearing the music.
If you drive by Mr. North, you can see a lot has changed.
I was just saying that.
Because they have the front page wall there already. Not much has changed, I mean, there has a lot been changed, but from this video, not much had changed from when we took that over. So we'll see a lot of differences when we get the next update related to that. And then next, other thing I just wanted to highlight was I compared our, what we call entity counts, from where we finished the year at to where we kind of started. Not like on first day start, I waited until the end of August to kind of compare where we are at number-wise. Obviously, we still have another month to go before we have what we call our official count day. But at the end of August, happy to say that we have had an increase of 56 students in our traditional buildings, which is very positive. The largest increases happening in Sharp Creek Elementary and Southwood Elementary. That does not include the nine pre-K sections that we offer as far as some of these number comparisons are concerned, because those don't count for AVM. And then also, you know, in a couple of sections, I'd like to mention that we, in our kindergarten and third grade section, we actually had to add a section just because of the numbers of students in those classes for this year. So just a lot of positive growth, and so good things. That's all I wanted to say.
How many kids do we have in the pre-K?
I'd have to look for the specific numbers, but we have nine sections, and so your four-year-old sections usually hold up to about 18?
Yeah, we have about 18 each section.
And then our three-year-old sections, we try to cap around 12-ish. Eighteen as well?
Yes.
So we're good there, okay. So. And we have waitlists too. The issue with going further than that is we just don't have enough space, so.
All right, Tim. Just real quick, we have PD days built into the calendar, and so this Friday is one of those. And so just to let you guys get a taste of it, we're sending all of our K-2 teachers down to Southwood Elementary. They're heading down to meet with an NWEA trainer to help them understand the data and look at their specific student results in that. We have three through six, we just bought that wonders curriculum, and so we're bringing one of their specialists into the central office. They'll be meeting with teachers here to help them understand the curriculum. And now that teachers have been in it about a month, they have lots of questions about how to find things or do whatever. We have iExcel training. We have grades through three that use iExcel. iExcel is being chosen as a vendor to work with our iLearn. And so the data these kids take on their checkpoints will fit with that. And so we have some teachers attending that. And we are also partnering with Manchester. Manchester is IOE specialist coming up to talk to them about iLearn and math and English. And so we're sending about 10 teachers up there to go listen to that. And then that's on top of what every other building is doing. We have test training going on, test security training going on, mandatory IOE trainings. And so it's a really busy day for everybody, but it's just fun to have. We work really hard not to make it a once-haves-but-it's-all, kind of like we do with everything. And so it makes it kind of complicated, but it's lots of energy. And so if you come visit us on September 12th, you're liable to see, I mean, who knows what it'll see. There'll be teachers learning and working on stuff. Yeah, we like to invest in our teachers. They're the best things we got, and so professional wellness is really important, so.
Thank you, Tim. We appreciate all the effort that goes into helping our teachers have the resources they need. New business. We have a first preliminary determination hearing that we need to have. Got my notes there. The next item on agenda is for the board to hold a preliminary hearing on the proposed bond project. After a presentation by administration and its advisors, there will be an opportunity for the public to make comments about the project. For this specific hearing, we will ask that each person limit their comments to three minutes and that the topic be limited to the proposed project under consideration. The notice of this preliminary determination hearing was published as legally required. At this time, I will ask Dr. Kuhn to explain the purpose of this hearing.
So pursuant to Indiana Code 6-1.1-20-3.5, a school corporation must hold two public hearings and adopt a resolution to preliminary determine to issue bonds or enter a lease for a project which has a total project cost in excess of certain thresholds. These public hearings and the future consideration of resolutions represents the beginning of the legal process. We note that no board action is legally required at this hearing. Rather, this is, this hearing is solely to hear public comment regarding the project.
We will now hear from Dr. Kuhn about the process of determining and communicating the project to the community and needs of the project.
So I'm going to go back here a little bit into history. So a lot of these discussions really started back around the 2017, 2019 timeframe. During that time, there were a lot of community surveys, district studies that were happening. And one of those that we focused on at that point in time was studying our facilities. So we had a couple of people come in and go through all of our buildings and just kind of see where we're at and what we need to continue to keep an eye on as we prepare and plan for the future. And so we took all that information and we developed a strategic plan. And that strategic plan had four priorities. We shared that strategic plan with our community, with our staff at the board, at a board meeting, and we focused, like I said, on four priorities. One of those priorities being facilities. And so COVID hit in 2020, so we took a pause away from implementing that strategic plan just because we had other things to do. And so shortly after that, I'd say around the 21, 22 timeframe, we began implementation of our four priorities. And eventually, we landed with our strategic plan for our facilities was we had determined to hold a referendum. We felt like we were going to reduce facilities, combine our two high schools together for efficiencies, et cetera. But then we also shared what areas we need to fix up if this doesn't happen. And so the referendum failed, so we pivoted to our other options. And so then we put a plan in place to fix up and prepare our facilities to where they need to be. And so we implemented that plan, and the first implementation started with the Northfield project. So that project actually began in June of 2024. We have a completion date, if everything stays on schedule, to begin at the start of the 26, 27 school year. So we should be able to be in that building at that time, which now allows us time to start focusing on a second portion of that plan, which was focusing on our south sites. And so in the work session, And so, um, in the work session before the board meeting, we shared a lot of the information related to, uh, the plan for that project and, uh, what that will look like. And so we began that process probably in early twenty twenty-five. We approved Barton Co. and Wyden in May of twenty twenty-five, uh, for those projects. And then we had a work session on June tenth, uh, with, uh, Steve Fulham and Ice Miller in relation to the bonding process to kind of get that, that, that started. And so with that being said, that kind of lands us here into, um, the bonding process to fulfill the needs, um, to establish on the south project.
All right. Any questions on that? We will now hear from, uh, Dr. Kuhn. About the proposed project meets the needs as he just described.
Yeah, so we're looking at, uh, renovations, additions, and improvements at both Southwood Junior Senior High School and Southwood Elementary School. The work session talked about, uh, you know, the need for upgrades in HVAC systems, uh, upgrades in additional spaces, uh, that we no longer utilize or we don't utilize to their full efficiency. Uh, that can be reorganized into something that we would get more use out of. And so, um, yeah, those, those project needs would, would be funded by us having the ability to, uh, borrow the money to make that happen.
All right. Now, we'll, uh, now hear from Stiefel about how the proposed project will be financed, as well as information about how the debt typical property tax fare.
All right, good evening, Luke Bergman with Stiefel, we serve as bond underwriter for the school corporation. Put a couple of slides together just to show the impact and how this will really layer in within your debt service levy. So the first thing that we always start with is the school corporation's debt service payments. You'll see from twenty-five to twenty-six, there's a little bit of a step up, but then those twenty-three bonds pay off and your payments on annual basis reduce significantly. If you flip to the next slide, that corresponds to the current debt service levy. And you'll see that really mirrors the payments, the only difference between the two is that the levy factor is in some miscellaneous revenue that you receive in that fund and, and the cash balance that, that you have available. So this is kind of our starting point when we're looking at, uh, layering in a new bond issue. And when you flip to the next slide, the total project authorization would be for fifty-five million. However, typically, whenever you're doing a project of this size, you don't need all fifty-five million on day one. You typically need a few million dollars to kind of kickstart the project, give some of the, uh, drawing, some of the initial work. So that would be, uh, highlighted here in green here, and that would be a two million dollar bond issue yet this year. Uh, the goal would be to structure this in order to maintain the one dollar and ten cent total tax rate that, in two thousand and twenty-six, that MSD Waldash has been accustomed to over the last few years. And then also leaving capacity beginning with the two thousand and twenty-seven payments, uh, to allow for that remaining fifty-three million dollars, which is on the next slide there. And that's highlighted in gray here, so you'll see how we kind of stack that on the two million dollar bond issue and the current debt service levy. Uh, so with the remaining fifty-three million dollars, the strategy would be to maintain the, the proposed two thousand and twenty-six debt service levy, also leave a little bit of a capacity beginning in twenty thirty. If costs do come in less, if you decide to reduce the scope or change the scope and it's not the full fifty-five million, that cliff from twenty-nine to twenty-thirty is going to be reduced significantly. Uh, so we do look at this as a maximum, all of the numbers here tonight are, are maximum numbers, we can always come down from these numbers, but once they're set, we cannot go above them. So if we flip to the next slide, these are the maximum parameters, and of course, there's no resolutions, uh, being set forth in front of you tonight. But when we come back at the, the, uh, second hearing in September, there will be resolutions that are set forth in front of you. These numbers will appear in those resolutions. So the total borrowing amount of the bonds, uh, total would be fifty-five million, estimated cost of issuance and underwriters discount of eight hundred and twenty thousand. Estimate, which leaves estimate proceeds available for hard and soft project costs of fifty-four million, one hundred and eighty thousand. Estimate interest rates of two to six percent, this is just the first step in the legal process. If we sold the bonds today, though, you'd be around a four, maybe four and a quarter. Uh, so we feel like we are conservative with, with all of this. The maximum term of bonds per issuance is twenty years. Uh, the estimated total interest costs, based on a conservative, conservative interest rate, is thirty-three million, three hundred and ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred and forty-seven. Uh, the maximum annual payment is eight million, that's simply the maximum that you can pay in any given year. Not that you're going to make eight million dollar payments for twenty years consecutively, just the max that you can make in any given year. Uh, if you simply divide that number by the school corporation's net assessed value, you get a maximum tax rate impact of twenty-six, nine, nine, seven. However, as we showed in the previous slide, once that twenty-six debt service levy is set, uh, there will not, not be an increase over the proposed twenty-six debt service levy. There's a couple of other ratios down there at the bottom that you'll see again in the resolution at the second hearing. Uh, the first one is simply the school corporation's max payments as a percentage of your net assessed value, which is point seven one three zero. Then the direct and overlapping debt as a percentage of net assessed value is ten point five eight. And really, all that is, is looking at all of the minus values property tax back then. So, city, town, county, township, library, school, all of the property tax debt divided by your net assessed value. So that's all that I have, these will be the, we'll walk through these slides again on the twenty-third, uh, but happy to answer any questions from the board administration.
Thank you.
So if I go back to this slide, I guess I just would reiterate, we, we, we had conversations about, um, borrowing some money at the end of the year because we do have the projects getting started, so there are some upfront costs related to that. Uh, in our work session, they also mentioned about the possibility of maybe having to bid some things a little earlier for those long lead items, which is going to come at a cost with that, so borrowing a small portion of, of some of that to kind of, uh, make those payments. And then once we get our bids, then we would have, we'd have actual numbers of what we know that we would need to borrow for that project. So, uh, we wouldn't authorize all of that money, uh, we would authorize what we need, uh, to cover that project. Now, there are items that are going to be, um, needed in the future, and so we kind of explain that in, in what the whole project scope looks like, because there'll be things outside of the, just the Southwood projects that we touched base on when we talked through the referendum. I mean, there's things that are gonna, that we need to address in some of our outdoor, uh, areas, uh, at both our junior, senior high schools. There's things that we're going to need to address possibly at Heartland Career Center. Uh, and then there are just some deferred maintenance things that are going to come up in the next few years that we're aware of. Uh, that, you know, some of these things we may be able to pay out of operations, uh, but if not, then we have the flexibility to, uh, borrow that without having to create an increased burden on any, any taxes that are already established, so. I guess I just wanted to be clear on that as, as we move forward.
Any questions? All right. When I open up, uh, the public hearing, as I mentioned earlier, we asked the state to name the address and limit your comments to proposed project in tiny's. Would you like? New value, oh, yeah. We'll open up the public conference. I was going to move on down.
Yeah.
So if anybody would like to make a comment, any questions? Too easy? If anyone doesn't want to, uh, talk, they'd like to thank all those who participated in the hearing. We appreciate your time and interest in the project and the future of our community. Please note that this is just the first step in the legal process. Again, no board action is legally required at this hearing, rather, this hearing is solely to hear, to hear public comment. The board will continue to work with administration and its professionals to look for efficiencies, to conserve tax dollars while meeting our educational needs. The board will hold the second public hearing in September twenty-third, uh, here at six o'clock here in the boardroom. So with that, we'll conclude the, uh, preliminary hearing. Move on to, uh, recommendation to approve corporate authorization resolution.
Yeah, so, uh, we've had the domino effect of people moving into other positions related to the treasurer. And so, with, um, Allison taking over the treasurer responsibilities at Northfield, uh, we just need to get her and Travis added to those bank accounts. And we'll have, uh, the former treasurer and myself renew. Uh, and so, we'll have another one of these for Sharp Creek, since Jess, Jessica's moving over to Sharp Creek, and eventually we'll have them for Metro North, too, so, um, but this, this, this relates to where we're at now, I think, so.
All right, I get a motion in second to approve this authorization. Thank you, guys. So a motion in second to approve the corporate authorization resolution. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Got a recommendation to salvage bus twenty-three and bus twenty-nine.
Yeah, so, um, after our inspections, those were the buses that, um, are no longer, um, really needed or usable in our fleet. And so, uh, we'd like at this point to, uh, salvage those so that we can, to rid of them basically, so we, typically, we take them to the auction to be auctioned off, so. Do you have any idea what model we could? Up your head? I'm gonna assume they're at least twelve years old.
I was in discussion somewhere. Did you go off?
We can get it for you. I don't know what I'm talking about, what the model is. Most of, most of the times, these are spares that get that.
While Travis is looking that up, can we get a motion in second to approve?
So the.
Second, sorry.
Got a motion in second to salvage bus twenty-three and twenty-nine, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Last one is the recommendation to approve an overnight extended field trip for Sharp, Sharp Creek fourth grade to Camp Tecumseh, uh, October third, or second to the third, year twenty twenty-five. Got a motion in second to approve this field trip. Got a motion in second to approve the, uh, Sharp Creek field trip, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Passes. Did any unfinished business, board policy, public comment? Any answers for board members? Well, we better wait before you get your answer. Oh, you got it.
Two thousand fourteen.
Two thousand fourteen.
You've still got a lot of years left in it, Kevin.
That was the point.
If there is anything, we will adjourn.